Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Duszkiewicz?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
Thank you. This morning, I would like to ask Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would now like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Blackburn the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. Ms. Duszkiewicz?
Sure. I just want to give a shout out to Sea Park again. Their Odyssey the Mine team won the first place in the world. That's a huge accomplishment for Brevard County and for Sea Park. So that's Mrs. Bloom is the coach from Sea Park Elementary and the seven girls around the team. So anyway, shout out to them.
Thanks. Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll say something.
Mr. Susan?
I just wanted to commend HR, Secondary Leading and Learning, and everybody else on a lot of the principal shift that's been occurring and giving opportunities to our new blood throughout the district. This has been a great overwhelming process for them and I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Blackburn and the staff for all the hard work that they put forward because there's a lot of friends inside that that I'm looking at their faces right now that well deserve where they're going and I'm very proud of you guys. And I look forward to the achievement levels in this district increasing by at least 10% for what you guys are doing. So thank you very much. I really appreciate everything that you guys have done and I just want to say congratulations.
Only 10%.
Only 10%. We gotta go incremental.
Dr. Blackburn?
Mr. Susan, what's up with the pressure there, sir? I echo those sentiments. Test scores were released last week, the balance of them. And while the state still has a mountain to climb in as far as ensuring that our adults and our children are more than just one test score, it's good for Brevard Public Schools to continue to be state leaders in student achievement. I think that that only strengthens our position of calling for assessment reform when we're actually leading the pack. So we saw nice increases in third grade scores, rest of reading, and EOCs across the board, either at or above state average. And I believe of all 19 categories, we at least improved in about 17 or 18 of those categories. So congratulations to the entire organization. And I am still really, really happy when I think about all the hands we got a chance to shake a few years ago at our graduations and how many kids are dual enrolled and walked away with AA degrees as well. Really great community doing all the great things. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Seems only appropriate, I'm sure you all in the audience noticed kind of the hustle that was going on up here prior to the board meeting. We had some technical issues this morning. So most definitely need to thank our ET staff who came up here and got it all worked out for us and got it resolved in a timely manner so we could start pretty much on time. And then also would like to give a warm welcome to Ms. Amy Endball, who's joining us on the dais today. She is our new in-house general counsel that was hired in May and has been doing great work supporting our staff in applying that legal lens to things going on in the district. So if you would join me in welcoming her. Okay, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, on this morning's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, 17 consent items, five action items, and two information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Please note that Item A7, Administrative Staff Recommendations, has been revised. Additionally, Items F14 on Instructional Staff Recommendations and Item F17 on the School Board's Casualty Insurance Policy Renewal also received revisions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig, to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Is there any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendation?
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Belford. On this morning's agenda, there are 25 administrative staff members for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Duszkiewicz, to approve the administrative staff recommendations. Is there any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. Yes, so that brings us to discussion on that issue prior to actually announcing the outcome of the vote. Mr. Susan, I believe that you are recusing from the administra- no, you are recusing from the instructional staff recommendations. So on this particular item for the administrative staff recommendations, you are fine. Okay, so no additional discussion on the administrative staff recommendations? Very good. Please vote. Is it populating for you, Pam? Okay, motion passes 5-0. All right, Dr. Blackburn?
Please let us take this opportunity to recognize and welcome the administrative staff members present with us this morning. There are a lot of names, be patient, but give everyone their just due when their name gets announced. Special day for all of them. First, congratulations, go out to Christine Moore on her reclassification and transfer from the position of principal at Bayside High School to the position of Director of Professional Learning and Development. Ms. Moore?
I just really want to thank the board and Dr. Blackburn, thank you for the opportunity. Dr. Kent, thank you for adding me to your team. My parents and my sister have been at every single promotion I've ever gotten here. And in between, my dad watches the school board so he tells me everything that's going on. So they need a big, big thank you. And my friends who are just workaholics and they left work to come here today, even telling me, "I'm gonna go, I'm gonna see you, I'm gonna leave, I've got work to do." My team at Bayside and my new team at HR, just thank everybody. I feel wonderfully supported in this district and I hope everybody else feels the same because it's an amazing district to work for. Thank you.
Well, Dad, now that I know you're watching, I'm gonna be on my best behavior. Next, welcome Tre'lanie Wise and congratulate her on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Teacher at Challenger 7 Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Apollo Elementary.
Good morning, Dr. Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Blackburn- Dr. Blackburn and the board. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, for this wonderful opportunity. I'd like to thank Ms. Lyons for bringing me to Brevard County, Ms. Razzle, Ms. Lanterman, Dr. Mella, Ms. Brockwell, Mr. Short for giving me the amazing leadership opportunities that I've had. I'd like to thank my Challenger 7 family, my personal family, my mom, my grandmother, my son, Trishawn, who couldn't be here, he's at football. And I'm excited about the new opportunity to be a part of the Apollo family. Thank you.
Next, congratulations to Shawn Chance on his reclassification and transfer from the position of Title I Coordinator at Westside Elementary School to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Dr. W.J. Creo Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, thank you, the board. And thank you, my fiancee, Ryan, and my future daughter-in-laws, or excuse me, stepchildren. You're the greatest thing that happened to me. Thank you, Ms. Pastenisi, for giving me the opportunity at Westside. Mrs. Curtis, the Assistant Principal at Westside, as soon as I came on the leadership team, you brought me right under your wing and I appreciate that. Mrs. Rogers, Ms. Rogers, I can't say enough. Four months into Westside, you said, "You're gonna be a great leader" and "I'm gonna make sure that happens." So thank you. And I'm a firm believer that you don't get promoted for doing a really good job. You can promote it because you have potential to do a really good job. And I want to thank Ms. Stewart. I want to do more at Creo and everybody from Creo that came. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations to Rosanna Cope on her reclassification from the position of Title I Coordinator at Endeavor Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Endeavor Elementary.
Well, I would just like to, first of all, say thank you to Dr. Blackburn and our board. I appreciate you trusting me to put me in this position. Thank you to Ms. Mercer for bringing me on in this new role. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Wilson, wherever you are somewhere, for seeing leadership skills in me before I saw them in myself. Also to Tara Taylor and Jane Klein. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. And to my family, who has been there for me these past few years that have been tough, but they have been worth it. And I'm excited. And thank you to my Endeavor family that's here. So thank you very much.
Next up, congratulations to Christina Carver on her reclassification from the position of Teacher on Assignment at Manatee Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Manatee Elementary.
Good morning. First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Blackburn, the board, and Mrs. Klein for this opportunity. I do have some people I want to thank. My parents and my grandmother are here and I am extremely thankful for their endless support and encouragement over the years. My husband is also here and I want to thank him for his patience on a daily basis. He is extremely supportive of my career and is a wonderful father to our two young girls at home. And then I want to say thank you to my Assistant Principal, Ms. Shannon Daly. I have valued all the experiences that you have allowed me to share with you and, but most of all, I value the relationship and the friendship that we have built over the past couple of years and I'm truly excited to work with you. And last but not least, I want to thank my principal, Mr. Carl Brown. He hired me in 2012 as a classroom teacher and he has been a mentor to me and along this time, along this way and this journey, he has shown me the true meaning of what loyalty is and how to be a leader. And I am so grateful to continue learning under his leadership. So thank you.
Also, congratulations to Casey Ernsoft on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Resource Teacher in Leading and Learning to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Quest Elementary School.
Thank you so much. Board members, Dr. Blackburn, thank you for this incredible opportunity. Words truly cannot describe how excited I am to serve the Quest community. My mom taught me at a very young age to surround yourself with incredible people and they will really build you up. In the last 12 years in Brevard County, I have been surrounded truly by the best. And so I just want to say thank you to a few people. My director, Ms. Tara Taylor, our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Klein, thank you for investing in me. Thank you for supporting me and encouraging me. I am so grateful to you. Four years ago, two amazing women took a chance on me, Dr. Wright and Dr. Spatitini. Thank you so much for believing me and supporting me. The teachers who have opened their classroom doors over the last four years and allowed me to grow alongside of them. Thank you. I am so blessed by an amazing husband and supportive friends. This has been an incredible journey and I cannot wait to serve alongside my amazing Quest family. Thank you so much. This is gonna be an amazing journey.
Congratulations to Kelly Grugan on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Teacher at Sunrise Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Riviera Elementary.
Thank you so much, Dr. Blackburn and to the board for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to it. The word excitement doesn't even begin to express how I'm feeling. And when I got the call, I was extremely excited and then I realized I had to do this and for a moment, I thought, "Oh, no." But I have so many people here that are supporting me. My amazing husband, Joe, and my children, Brayden and Andy. My mom, who I can't make eye contact with right now, is here and my mother-in-law is here and my sisters, Jenny and Honor, somewhere else. I decided to bring the whole family because they all should have to, you know, witness and be a part of a school board meeting at some point in their life. There have been so many mentors in my life that have gotten me to this point. I'd have to start with Ms. Stephanie Archer, my sixth-grade teacher at Turner. Oh, I like the eyes. Yes, yes.
Showing secrets.
Yes, and then also one of our- another appointee today, Ms. Tammy Brock, who was my cheerleading coach at Southwest. She is here being appointed today, too. But I have to, without getting emotional, talk about my leadership at Sunrise Elementary. I have two wonderful Assistant Principals, Ms. Aloys, who is holding down the fort right now, who couldn't be here, and Mrs. Kathleen Campione, who have raised me up and made me the person I am today. And we are very fortunate to have learned from the one and only Mr. Barry Pitchard, who plucked me out of kindergarten and said, "You're gonna be a leader." And he nurtured me the whole way. So I am so grateful to you. And anyway, thank you to the board. Thank you, Ms. Klein and Dr. Mella and also to Ms. Sylvester for your encouraging words. Thank you.
Next up, we congratulate Erica Lucarotti on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Counselor at Westside Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Sable Elementary. Did I say her name right?
You did.
Great, congratulations.
Good morning. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Blackburn and the school board for making this a dream come true for me. I'm very excited to become the Assistant Principal at Sable. I'd also like to thank you for instilling such fabulous leadership across Brevard. I've had the privilege of working with two amazing principals over the past 10 years, one being Elaine Pastenisi and the other one, Ms. Rogers. Without their mentoring and support along the way, I know I wouldn't be standing here today. So thank you so much. I'd also like to thank my family. They have been my backbone and without them, I would not be able to be standing here and my journey in education would not have been the same. And last but not least, very not least, is Ms. Stephanie Hall. I'm so privileged to become your Assistant Principal. I'm honored, excited, and I can't wait to be a Tre'laes.
Congratulations to Amanda Batman on her reclassification from the position of Teacher at West Melbourne Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at West Melbourne Elementary.
When I got the call that I was getting this promotion, I was kind of torn between doing a happy dance, spiking a football, or just doing the Tarzan yell, but I knew that that wouldn't be professional. So I thought that I would just hope that you could sense my enthusiasm for this next chapter in my career, that you could see how excited I am to forge even deeper relationships with the students, their families, the staff at WMSS, and of course, district members. And I hope that I could- you will understand how thankful I am to Ms. Taylor, to Mrs. Klein, to my principal, Dr. Marshall, and to all of you. Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity and I will do my best to take care of our babies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batman. Did I say your name right? Did the kids ever go, "Da na 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 na?" I thought I was the only one who was thinking. Moving on, we certainly want to congratulate Tammy Brock on her reclassification from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Merritt Island High School to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at McNair Middle School.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Blackburn and the board for appointing me. I'm super excited to work with Jasmine Delauter. We go back a long, long way. I actually worked with her mother at Southwest. And I'm so enjoying seeing all of- some of my babies growing up here. And I've been here a while. So I'd like to thank Molly Vega, my principal right now until July, for all the time and effort that she put in helping me get where I'm going. And this is my daughter, Malia. And my husband is on the road, so unfortunately, he couldn't be here. But thank you so much to Barbara Rodriguez for thinking of me and believing in me all this time and all of the support I've gotten throughout the district. Thank you.
Congratulations to Laura Glover on her reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Elementary to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Southwest Middle School.
Good morning. I'd like to thank Dr. Blackburn and members of the board for this opportunity to become the 12-month Assistant Principal at the great Southwest. Over the years, I've had several mentors. I've had Mrs. Pastenisi for the last two years. I've had Mr. Shearer, Chris Hinkle, who's also here today, Lori Braga, who have mentored me and helped to prepare me for this position. I'd also like to thank Janine Jost, who has been with me for the last year, working with me as an Assistant Principal. I'd like to thank my parents, who have encouraged me to become an educator. And also, I'd like to thank Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Novelli for believing in me at Southwest and encouraging me 10, 15 years ago to become an administrator. I kicked and screamed and drug my feet, but I finally listened and I have been very happy with that change. Most importantly, I'd like to thank God for giving me the abilities and talents to be able to work with children and to make a difference in their lives.
Congratulations to Deborah Lubbers on her reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior/Senior High to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Merritt Island High School.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn and the school board. I just want to give, thank- have this time to thank Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Mella, and Mr. Novelli and my current principal, Sylvia Majeskiewicz, who has just poured into me wisdom, leadership opportunities that I've grasped onto and kind of drank them in like a sponge, trying to grow. And I look forward to working with Ms. Vega for future growth opportunities and developing and learning to be a better leader so I can make a difference.
And congratulations- and congratulations to Jennifer Gonzalez on her reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Viera High School to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Titusville High School.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, and thank you, members of the school board. I'm so excited for this opportunity. Obviously, thank you to Mrs. Jones. I won't let you down. Very excited to be a part of the Titusville family. I have my family here tonight. My husband, Jeremy, my daughters Lauren and Liliana, and my mom, Pam, and my dad, Paul, who definitely support me. I could not do all the things I do without their help. Also, Mr. Alba, Mrs. Robinson, Dr. McGriff, and the rest of the Viera family that have helped me move along and grow. Thank you very much. Thank you to Mr. Novelli. Just thank you to all of you. I really appreciate this and I'm super excited.
Congratulations now to Glenn Webb on his reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at O'Gally High School to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at West Shore Junior/Senior High School.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, and thank you to the board. I want to start by thanking my O'Gally team that I've been with. Jeremy Solomon has given me every opportunity I could ever ask for and given me every support I ever needed to make sure that success was in my hands. And for that, I thank you. Chris Hinkle is here. What a great support and mentor he has been. With me today, I have my wife, a longtime educator, my daughter, Emma, my son, Caleb, that she graduated from Brevard Public Schools. My son is currently at O'Gally High School. Happy Commodore, as he is. I see lots of faces and so many people here that I could name 30 people who I've reached out and asked for support and they've given it without any- without any inclination of not helping me out. It's been nonstop support from everybody at that back table, so many people here in the gallery. And finally, I want to reach out to Mr. Fleming, who I can't thank enough for taking the chance and giving me the opportunity to become part of the Wildcat Nation. I can't- it's been a dream of mine to work curriculum for this man. I've heard so much about him from my mentors and- and I'm really excited for this next step. So thank you very much.
Mr. Webb, after the meeting, I'll give you the rest of the story on Mr. Fleming over there. Next, we offer congratulations to Lena Wybell on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Principal at Hoover Middle School to the position of Principal at Bayside High School. She's in China?
She did text us and say she's really excited.
Is this professional development in China? What is this, Ms. Moore?
Her son got married to-
Oh, terrible issues.
Her son is getting married in China. Ms. Wybell, congratulations to you and your family. Last but certainly not least, we want to welcome and recognize Yolanda McGriff on her appointment as 12-month Assistant Principal at Johnson Middle School.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. To Dr. Blackburn and members of the board, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I truly appreciate your support. There are countless number of people that I could name. We certainly don't have time to go through my list, but I'd like to name by department or by school. Special thanks to my administrative team from Viera High School for their support over the last couple of years. I'd like to thank my former Centenary Office family as well. I'd like to thank Secondary Leading and Learning. And certainly, last but not least, I'd like to thank Mrs. Marina Middleton And certainly, last but not least, I'd like to thank Mrs. Marina Middleton for entrusting me with the responsibility to become a part of Johnson Middle School and that community. Thank you to everyone.
So, Mrs. Belford and members of the board, I wanted to wait until it was complete, until it was all approved, all these people becoming assistant principals, before I said, "I was an assistant principal once. It was the hardest, most difficult, most painful job I have ever had. I drove home every day saying to myself, 'It's just not fair. I gotta work this hard,' right? What does the principal actually do around here if I'm doing, if I'm doing all the work? I mean, every day." But congratulations. I'd be remiss if I didn't share with you, as you begin your leadership journey, each and every initiative you have, or you're thinking about having, will fail, fail miserably, until you build and solidify relationships with your people, your big people and your little people. Relationships, relationships, relationships. Everything else will fail until you do that. So that ought to be number one on your priority list. It ought to be numbers two and three as well. Congratulations.
Dr. Blackburn, I'd like to thank you for sharing that important piece of wisdom. But in, in the information that you've shared with our, our team of leaders, it brings to highlight one thing that we, as a board, are clearly doing something wrong if your hardest job ever was assistant principal. So we'll be, we'll be turning on the heat.
No, no, no. What I meant to say, Mrs. Belford, at the time...
Thanks for the clarification, Adam. Okay, I believe that brings us to recognition item, Dr. Blackburn.
Getting myself in trouble up here. Item B8 is recognizing the Office of Purchasing and Warehouse Services for receiving the Award of Excellence in Public Procurement for 2017. Dr. Mark Mullins, Chief Operating Officer, will make the presentation. Dr. Mullins?
Good morning. I'm very excited to announce that the Office of Purchasing and Warehouse Services has earned the Florida Association of Public Procurement Officials Award of Excellence in Public Procurement for 2017. The program places emphasis on continuous process improvement and outstanding purchasing practices. Earning this award serves as confirmation of the significant quality of an agency's procurement process and demonstration of the commitment and contributions to the public purchasing profession. This prestigious award is earned only by those organizations that demonstrate excellence by obtaining high, high scores based on standardized criteria which measure innovation, organization, professionalism, source selection, productivity, e-procurement, process improvements, and leadership attributes. The trophy was actually presented on Friday, May 26th, at the FAPO's 50th Annual Conference and Trade Show in Orlando. And as an additional accolade, the district has won this award for the fifth time this year. And we are only one of 12 agencies in Florida to receive this honor. That includes two other school districts, Orange and Volusia County Public Schools. My sincere appreciation goes out to Ed Parker and his team for an exceptional job. Purchasing and Warehouse Services has truly distinguished, distinguished themselves within the state. Some of the team members that are here this morning to be recognized and, and that contributed to this award, of course, is Ed Parker, a Director of Purchasing and Warehouse, Purchasing Manager Don Richer, Senior Buyer Will Henzelman, Buyers Nick Handjar, Sean Haynes, and Heidi Dotson, Purchasing Specialist Blake Stinson and Candy Cottle, Administrative Secretary April Terry, and our Warehouse Supervisor Sandy Kimpel, and a lot of great folks with still boots on the ground working, our Warehousemen and the Warehouse Team. So congratulations, Ms. Belford and Dr. Blackburn. If you would, join us down front for a photo with our Purchasing and Warehouse Team.
Mr. Susan, I believe you had a comment.
I wanted to say, I'm so proud of the Warehouse Crew over there off 520 for the things that they've been doing through the years. Right now, over the summer, they're working with no air conditioning, running our trucks, and doing everything else, and we forget about them as we go home. I just wanted to say thank you to those guys for what they do on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mr. Susan, and thank you to the entire team over there. All right, as we are letting many of our, our families and new appointees make their way back to other things that they are certain to have to do with their day, we are moving to the point of the agenda at public comment. We'll give them just a minute to get moving, and then we'll get into the discussion.
Discussion or comment?
Comment. Well, discussion about the expectations for their public comment. Never can tell, he's not on the list, but...
He's getting amped up in the back?
That he's not here? Okay, as we prepare for public comments, please keep in mind the maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. While no action will be taken this morning by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, request that response to specific speakers be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." These responses will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name as you approach. This morning, we have two speakers, Toby Napier and Dan Bennett. Toby, if you would, go ahead and approach.
Greetings, man of chair and board members. My name is Toby Napier. I am one of the founders of BEPAC and also known in some circles as one of those garden sales parents. But I'm here as a private taxpayant citizen today. It is incumbent upon the district to seek out the best value we can get out of our taxpayer dollars. I did a review of item G31, and I found a few potential calculations that could be adjusted and realize a savings off the current contract as proposed, anywhere from about 3%, almost 5%. This is without removing a single line item or reducing a single percentage based simply on how they're doing the calculation. There can be discussions of that's how it's normally done. That's fine. One of the calculations I proposed actually uses that. It just takes the 5% per construction contingency out of line item, breaks it down where the other contingency is. That's $180,000 savings right off of that, just by that one single change. But to be honest with you, I believe the issue is more systemic than any one contract. I'm actually here today to request that we get a policy on our contracts that specifies how the calculations will be applied. Now, you can implement that policy and have the options such as the three that I presented in a previous email, and select one. The point here is get everybody on the same page. All contractors submit the bid, they're all presenting it the same way. Not one contractor doing it this way, and it looks like a better value, but it's actually worse value when you compare it to another contractor that doesn't put a 5% contingency in a line item inside of the contract. I think we, as a district, would benefit from that for comparison purposes. I mean, that's really what I'm here to ask for. I probably slapped a minute, and I have a lot of soapboxes I could get on, but I'll spare you. I do appreciate your time. Any considerations? I'll be here for a bit if there's any questions from either, any of you or from the district staff. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Toby. Mr. Bennett?
Good morning. Good morning all. I'm Dan Bennett from Brevard Federation of Teachers. Last time I spoke to you, we were talking about a theme of just doing the right thing. When we look at issues, when the union talks to management, we're negotiating things back and forth, or just whether it's for the contract or just how to do something. If we have a smart idea, we don't have to balance it with a stupid idea, just because that's how negotiations have to work, we can just do the right thing. The example that I had, we're talking about annual contract reappointments. You know we have a piece of contract language about that. And I was talking last time about House Bill 7069. We're still asking everyone, please reach out to the governor. We, we hear that he's going to consider that bill, possibly sign it this Thursday. We're asking for the veto. We don't know what's going to happen yet. But it entails, one of the many provisions of that is annual contract teacher reappointments. Now, we just saw a room full of annual contract management get reappointed. Before the school year was even out, we saw annual contract principals get reappointed. But we have it in our contract about annual contract teachers being reappointed. You could just make it your board policy. Then it's something that doesn't have to be in the contract. Then your annual contract teachers could still be reappointed before the end of the school year if we just do the right thing. It'd be a smart idea. It's something I shouldn't have to come up with, "Well, let's, let's teachers agree to something stupid so that you do something smart." No, we can get away from the horse swapping, and you could just do the right thing. I want to talk about another example, just do the right thing. A lot of these, and congratulations to, to all of them, and as some principals move schools and now assistant principals moving up. When they interviewed for those positions, certainly they had interviews, and certainly those interviews take hours, I wonder if they had to take sick leave from their current jobs to interview for the next jobs? Well, teachers have to take sick leave. An email went out from HR to principals and said, "Now, when teachers are looking to transfer, try to interview them before or after the workday hours." So principals got the direction to try to do their interviews before or after the student day, but in some cases, a principal would tell a teacher, "If you want to transfer, you want to interview, you come in at this time." It was during the middle of the day. And then a teacher had to take sick leave for that. Now, there's nothing in the contract about that. So we contacted HR, we talked about it, talked about it to a couple of people, HR, never heard back. But I know the teachers were ducked sick leave to go interview. You didn't do that for management. You shouldn't do it for teachers. It shouldn't be something you have to go to the table. It shouldn't be a horse swap. I shouldn't have to dream up something stupid that we'll take as a punishment. You could, you could just do the right thing. And while I'm on that theme of doing the right thing, you all brought to us a, a discussion of moving early release from Wednesday to Friday. Well, we surveyed, folks. We don't have time to survey on every issue, because we won't really get into bargaining every issue. We don't do another survey. But for this one, we put it out there, because it got a lot of Facebook hits. And to be honest, well, I mean, just to reveal this, we're, we're split. Some teachers really like Wednesday, some really like Friday. A lot are not that passionate about it. They could go either way. But they were passionate about this. 89% of teachers on our survey, and we had over 800 responses, 89% of teachers said they don't need the professional development, they like the planning time. 95% of teachers said we should be allowed to use comp time. That's, that's when we work after hours, we go to an event, we work on the weekends, we do something, not paid for, not like coaching that we get paid for. But something else? So you got 89% said we don't need the professional development. It shouldn't be a horse trade. It should just be a, do the right thing. All right, thanks. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Okay, any board members need to respond or request a response on the record to either of our public speakers? Okay. Then, the board wishes to thank this morning's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. That moves us into the consent agenda, Dr. Blackburn.
There are 17 agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any items? Mr. Susan?
If I can pull F14?
All right, Pam, if you would please pull F14. Any other board members wish to pull any items on the consent agenda? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of F14.
So move?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan. Please vote. Ms. Medeskovic is having some technical difficulties. She's logging out and logging back in. Do you want us to voice vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes 5-0 to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F14. All right, that brings us to item F14. Mr. Susan, your poll, your, your motion?
I'd like to make a memorandum of voting conflict and read the following. In accordance with Section 112.3143, Section 3 Subsection A of the Florida statutes, I hereby declare a voting conflict with respect to consent agenda item F14 and confirm that I did not participate in the discussion of said manner and will abstain from vote on said item. The nature of my conflict is that a relative of mine is nominated for reappointment for professional service contract under F14. The passage of this item will inure to the special benefit of my relative. I will file this memorandum of voting conflict with Pam Escobar, Administrative Assistant to the School Board, and request it to be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. So I will enter...
Move to approve F14. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve item F14 with Mr. Susan recusing from vote. Any discussion? Please vote.
Matt, did you abstain?
Yes.
I think you have to click abstained, don't you? Abstained option?
There it is. Sorry, thank you. I didn't do that.
And the motion passes 4-2-1 with Mr. Susan abstaining. We don't need a break, do we?
No, ma'am.
We will move then on to the action agenda, Dr. Blackburn.
There are five items for your consideration. The first one is item G27 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Mr. Susan?
Can I pull 27B? Pull it, discuss it.
Yeah, it's open for discussion. All of F27, so go, or G27?
B27. You want me to start? B27 deals with the Staples contract, and the, what we're doing there is, is we're bulk basically purchasing a membership, just like we do at Sam's Club and everything else. One of the things that we're doing with that is, is that we just did Amazon at $200,000 last board meeting. Now, we're doing Staples at $95,000, and I was wondering if there's any crossover as far as what we're ordering, because the, Amazon's a new one. We may be able to utilize products through there. That's the first thing. So what I'm asking is, you guys don't need to come up. Basically, there's a, in, about seven pages in, it talks about rebates. And one of the things that I wanted to make sure was that we're getting our rebates from Staples after we purchase the certain amount that we get. So I'm going to send out an email stating how many rebates we get, what the percentage is, and the cost and the benefit to depend on if we need to renew this contract next year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Any further discussion? All right, please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
The next item is item G28 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve? Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve item G28. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn.
We move on to item G-29 on job description revision, school social worker.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Duskovich, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn.
Item G-30 is the approval of the 2016-2017 Florida Educational Equity Act update.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve item G-30. Is there any discussion?
Just make a quick point because this is all about equity and Title IX and all that. And I don't think there's been a year that we comply to the T and I think it's worthy to note that it's virtually impossible to meet those strict requirements of federal Title IX, to the point of almost being ridiculous. This is just a report on what our numbers are.
Any additional discussion? Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn.
Item G-31 is on district school security, design build services, sales, surtax.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig. Is there any discussion? Ms. Duskovich.
We've had a lot of emails, at least I've had a lot of emails come in from community members with concerns about this agenda item. And then we heard Mr. Napier speak. And Mr. Theodore and Ms. Hahn have been diligent in answering my questions, but I still have many concerns that we are not spending taxpayer money wisely. It is a priority of mine and I think of the entire board that security is important for our students. However, it's extremely important to me that we're using taxpayer money as wisely as we can. And in a purchase this large and a contract this deep, I've just had question after question and concern after concern. And so, one that's still remaining, Ms. Hahn, are you here to answer questions? Was the pre-construction contingency number that Mr. Napier was speaking about with the savings, he feels like would be $180,000 in savings in the contract if we, if they recalculated this. In the email I sent, I asked about that and the response back last night was that there was no pre-construction contingency, that there was just contingency, yet when I look at the link on the contract, I see a line item for pre-construction contingency and I see a 5% for contingency. So, that is where my major confusion still comes in. Can you help with that?
Yes, generally. And I would like to thank Mr. Napier. You did a very nice job looking at the contract and thank you for your analysis. And as a result of his analysis, we've done some adjustments and we also are talking with our auditor about getting a consistent format for the proposals that come in. So, thank you for that comment and we are proceeding with that. But in specific answer to your question, there is one contingency and it is calculated at 5% of the projected actual cost. And how we do our contracting, for the most part in these types of contracts, these are design build contracts and they are on an actual cost basis. And so, what the contractors provide to us is a guaranteed maximum price and that is an estimate. And so, they calculate what they believe to be the guaranteed maximum price. They look at the actual cost of the work, meaning any subcontracts, any of their time and effort in the project, any of their costs that are eligible by contract, which includes things like bonds and insurance. And those are, that is the cost of the work. The contingency is just simply an extra amount allocated that can be applied to project scope that comes up as it is under construction. So, for example, the contractor on this project is not entitled to use any of that contingency until such time as it is needed and it must be approved by the district. When contingency is used, those factors apply specifically bonds and insurance because it is being added to the cost of the work. The other items that were the general, general conditions and construction administration, those are estimates of hours that were provided either by the general contractor for their hours or by their subs for construction administration services. And those are billed on an actual cost. So, the percentage is simply there to provide an estimate value, but what we pay as the district is the actual cost of those activities that are audited at the end of the job. And we have already met with our auditors on this particular job because it is so complicated. We have 65 schools and if we add in the front entry lockdown mechanism, we will be touching all 85 schools. And each school has their costs allocated and calculated separately. And so, we need to audit it that way. So, our auditors are already working with our team and facilities as well as our vendor to make sure that we are providing the information that they need to look at these costs and make sure that the district is getting the best taxpayer value. So, I hope I have answered your question, Ms. Duskovich. I apologize if that was a little long, but if I haven't, please let me know and I'll try.
Unfortunately, I'm still confused. Do you have a copy of the whole contract in front of you? I just scrolled down. I'm at page 38 of 247. I mean, you can pick any one of them, but that's just the one I just scrolled down to. And I see the line item number 114. Let me wait. Are you?
Page 38?
38 of 247, of 247. Okay. If I go down to line 114, it says pre-construction phase contingency, looks like 5% to me, $1,531. If I go below to the line 128, I see contingency at 4%. So, there's the 5% contingency which says it's on the pre-construction phase. And from the way Mr. Napier explained it to me, that 5% from the top is being used to find the numbers for the general conditions, the construction admin, the liability and the bond. And then at the bottom, there's another contingency for 4%. Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but I want to understand that better. Please.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I understand your question.
Okay.
Because the worksheet that generalizes all of this together has the 5% contingency in it. So, if you look on page, make sure I get this correct.
29 is the one that has the summary that you all sent back? Is that the page you're looking?
Yes ma'am. On page 29, there is a 5% contingency on the project and that's adding all the projects together in the 5%. The pre-construction contingency is in, let's see. Just give me a moment because I look at the general, I didn't.
Yeah, no, I know this is on the fly and I'm sorry.
Just give me a moment. I have to tell you, I cannot tell you exactly where that number is, but it appears that it is picking up some of the bond or adjustments. And we do have our folks from Morton Smith here, so perhaps Jonathan can answer that directly if you wouldn't mind giving me an assist on that.
Good morning, Dr. Blackburn. Good morning, board. The pre-construction phase contingency essentially is within our direct costs when we have been designing and procuring these projects, getting ready for procurement, we essentially reached out to vendors to provide us with unit rate costs on some of these items that we're seeing across the district. Fencing is a good example as well as access control. So, what we did is we essentially bid out this information with the general quantity so we could get the best unit rate prices. So, what we do then is based off of each of the designs, we would go into the school and identify, for example, on page 38, we, you'll see we have, I'm just looking it up. Well, if you go right to the very top, for example, we have four lineal feet of demolition for a moving counter. We, these numbers are based off of unit costs that we've received from the competitively bid and basically they're done based off the design. So, we essentially use that pre-construction phase contingency to build any miscalculations within those design criteria essentially. So, when we purchase these direct costs, when we go to establish our commitments and our contracts with the vendors, that's that ability to purchase that amount in our direct costs because this is designed built before having to go into the owner slash contract contingency. So, it's essentially our ability to make sure we're capturing the direct costs when we purchase these commitments because of the type of contract we have. Does that help answer the question?
It does, but is that, so is the total contingency now 9%? Because there's five at the bottom and four, or five and then 4% at the bottom?
I'd have to do the actual calculation, but what it allows us, the flexibility to do is essentially purchase these materials and make our commitments on these essentially estimated costs where we've got bids for unit prices, where we haven't established a true proposal per school in some scenarios as we move through design build process and the design phase. So, it allows us to purchase that without going into that contingency. So, I would have to actually do the calculation to see what the true contingency is if you were to take that kind of direct cost contingency that's built into those sections, the access control and the perimeter fencing sections to come up with that calculation.
Okay, what's, I think, okay, one more. I'm getting closer here. So, I still don't understand why part of that contingency is the general conditions, the construction, the liability insurance applies because that's the 180,000 we're discussing. If you move that number, if it keeps, if you keep it up there, all of those percentages are applied to this pre-construction cost, which is variable, it sounds like. And then the other one is below is where it seems like it all should be at the bottom, if I'm reading this correctly.
Well, that's about the point. What it does essentially is once we make those procurement items and we establish that actual cost, so for example, with access control, if you move down to the total cost for that subtotal is $32,147. So, that means we have up to that amount to procure for that, those line items. And say we only procure and we buy up a project at $30,000 even, that $2,147 will go back into contingency as well as the general conditions and all of the fees associated with it that were tacked on. That money will go right back into the contingency. So, that's all project savings because this is actual cost. So, it's not like the district's responsible or we are, will be gaining that cost. It actually just goes back into contingency.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Mr. Susan.
Just a couple of real quick questions. First one is, is what you're saying is that this is the maximum that we can pay and there's an opportunity that it'll cost less?
Yes.
The next question is, is that you used and quoted local companies from Brevard County in doing this?
Yes, we reached out, we specifically targeted Brevard County contractors. Because the size and scale of the project, we did have to make it win because it was a public setting. We obviously advertised for anybody, but we emphasized, emphasized on Brevard County. And I think of, typically there's eight to nine contractors on each job or each school and I think roughly above five to six to seven in some cases are local Brevard subcontractors.
Was East, was East Coast Fence and Deck the largest fencing company in our district part of that bid?
We have reached out and they've worked on past projects for this. Based off of experience for this one, we did think they were going to be the low qualified bidder, but they were more that they were definitely invited to the bid process.
Additional questions? Mr. Craig.
First of all, thank you for answering some of those questions. I still, I'm still confused and call me thick, that's fine, because I have an email from last night that says there, in fact, the exact quote is, and this, and I don't know if it was from you, Ms. Hahn, or from Mr. Theodore, but it says, "There is no contingency associated with pre-construction activities." Yet, the line item says pre-construction phase contingency. So, that in itself is diametrically opposed. I'm not, was somebody wrong in how they presented it? Is there a lack of understanding? I misunderstand now because I'm confused.
I think the problem is the vocabulary that we're all using. So, in our case, when we talk about pre-construction services, we talk about design and bidding. And so, there was an entirely separate board action about a year ago to do the pre-construction services for this project. That did not have any contingency in it. So, in this contract, what we have is contingency embedded in the direct cost from Morton Smith is something that they are defining as pre-construction contingency. So, that is how that confusion happened. But from our perspective, there was no pre-construction contingency. There is only the 5% contingency on their direct costs in which they have a pre-construction contingency in their direct cost numbers.
Okay, I think I, sorry, I think I, I think I understand that. It sounds like that they used that terminology and you reacted to it, I guess. I don't know. Maybe Mr. Theodore has.
Mr. Craig, I edited Sue's response last night. I was the one that actually said, "There is no contingency of the 5%." As they're typically, as they're bidding jobs in the pre-construction phase, they're designing it and bidding it, they're carrying a contingency in there to do the ups and downs, the overages and unders as they finalize their subcontract awards. What you have before you is their version of a final contract. What they are saying is they've gone out to the market and based on the design, which is part of the pre-construction services, solicited bids and have recommended to us the low qualified bidder. They've aggregated all of those subcontracts. And now, what you have before you is the final construction contract, the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, for the actual work as its bid, actual bids. What they're now doing is carrying a 5% contingency on those actual bids and their estimates for their labor. So, when I said that there is no pre-construction contingency, that, that pre-construction activity is in the past. They have actual bids now and they're going to, we are going to award them a contract, our intent is to award them a contract on actual bids with a 5% contingency. So, we're past the pre-construction, we're now in the construction phase.
So, that makes sense. But then the next question then, it seems then, because of where that line item is, the rest of the actual construction contract is compounded on top of that. You know what I'm saying? Because we have, you have a 5% contingency built into the pre-construction phase that that's just for the, 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 the design that is still going on, right? That's what he just said. So, the rest of the contract, all the time materials after that is compounded on top of that 5%. And yet, there's another contingency at the, at the end of it. That's where I think our confusion lies is to, why is the, why, we have never seen that before. I've never seen a, a contract compounded on top of itself, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't. Because the structure of this job and with this many schools we're touching and the way we chose to reach out and select bidders and the way we've got the bid format back with the unit prices versus hard and fast quote per school, typically you'll see, we'll have our bid evaluation to the side that shows your subcontractors and their quote amounts for that exact school, those exact quantities. What we've done because of the range and because we got the best pricing by saying, for example, fencing, you're going to have 10,000 lineal feet of chain link fence if you're awarded this, this many schools, what's that best price you can give us for getting that quantity? So, instead of giving us a price if they're only doing 200 lineal feet at Astronaut High School, but they're doing 5,000 total, we're not getting that price at Astronaut High for just 200 lineal feet. So, because you have some, when there's mobilization costs and there's certain costs, you're not going to get that lowest necessarily the price we go to purchase that project. Always, there is going to be some variations essentially when you go to purchase that project. What we've done, what we've done is taken that lowest unit price cost that we've got and then that contingency allows us to purchase the project with that dollar value. For example, if you're looking on page 38, it's 32,147. So, we're expecting that there's going to be some variations between that, the summary and that's what that, it's not a pre-construction, it's really because it's prior to construction before. before we're awarding the contract. Typically, your contingency is lost handles, sometimes error emissions, but typically it's during the construction process.
Right.
When you find un, unforeseen conditions. The reason why we call it pre-construction is that allows us to buy the project if there wasn't any errors in the estimate, the unit price just didn't work, even though, you know, say we were only, that fencing contractor could only take on 10 schools, we had planned on 20,000 linear feet and can only now take on 15 and that unit price would have just a slight bit. That allows us to procure that amount or those subcontracts for that amount. And if it's under, again, like you said, all the general condition costs, the contingency costs, all those fees that compound, just go right back into the contract contingencies. So, the sales tax here, okay, that we don't gain that cost.
Okay.
Is there any question?
I think it does. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Susan.
Can you tell me the fencing company that actually was awarded the contract? If they're in Orlando, if they're in Brevard County?
Certainly. We've got multiple, since we haven't received this, we obviously have made the 52 schools that are within this contract. The first 13 schools that we've procured, All Right Fencing, who is based out of Orlando, however, they have, they can have a Brevard presence, the commercial fence. The other folks that we've reached out to here in this area were low qualified. We did have meetings, we did a bid evaluation of those specific school estimates. And fencing was one of the scopes that wasn't awarded to a Brevard County company. However, electrical, security, the access control components, the local surveillance components, like I said, there were, the majority of the subcontractors were awarded to Brevard County. And as a company, we, that's our philosophy, that we try to keep the local dollar low. And we've always done that, and we continue to do that. So, but at the same time, there's only a certain amount of projects. We have an aggressive schedule within a year to try to accomplish the security as quickly as possible. So, certain companies can only take on a certain amount of workload.
Thank you. Sue, what's the name of our audit company that oversees this?
Carwigs and Acre.
All right. And then, one last question. Are you guys going to recycle that fence that you guys are getting rid of?
Of course. We, we always, the first, the Brevard folks was up for credit salvage, so we always make that call, you and schools in particular, for the project management costs and, or ourselves, contact meetings in Brevard County.
So, if they want to do something with it, collect it, or go recycle it and make money off of scrap, whatever that is, they can do that? Beautiful.
Are we, sorry. Are we sure we have first right of refusal on all that? I, I feel like when I read this last week thoroughly, I saw that you all get all the demolition and all the stuff we're taking down. Is that, do, can you point me to the right place?
We've actually changed our contract language to be more specific about the district has salvage rights on all equipment. And that was really oriented towards the HVAC type contracts where there is salvage equipment. This one probably has the old language in it, but we certainly work well with our contractors. And I don't imagine that you have any problem with us taking our fence.
Additional board member comment, question? Mr. Ziegler and then Mr. Craig?
I just wanted to clear up some things we've heard in the wind about whether or not our security leaders have chimed in and blessed these security projects. And it's been clarified, thank you, it's been clarified, and if you confirm that, absolutely, this started with Lieutenant Scully. Then, there was a transition to Major Morris, who then jumped in, and now, it's Major Walters? Major Walters also is, is on board, and they've all reviewed this and blessed this. I was also led to be concerned about whether our sheriff himself was aware and on board. And I did speak with him this morning to get clarification that, yes, absolutely, his team has participated on that. There was a concern that he did not feel that fencing was the appropriate thing to do. And he clarified to me what his comments were, is that he felt that the number one security item in our school should be SROs. But, understanding that the sales tax money cannot be used on labor, that the number one thing should be security from a fencing, single point of entry, point of view. But, I just wanted to bring that out there for anybody who was listening, that absolutely our sheriff's department and our security experts have overlooked at all of this and blessed it all. Can you confirm that?
That is confirmed, Ms. Susan.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig and then Mr. Susan.
Just to, just to reinforce that, so, while we spent a lot of time on talking with facilities because they're implementing it, this is a security project, falls under the COO, under the security department. This is a security-led initiative, and facilities is the facilitator, as it were. So, I appreciate specifically how those two departments have worked together to get to where we're at. Because there was, let there be no mistake, the accelerated timeline of this did not fall on anybody but the five people sitting right here. We pushed for this to move forward quicker because we feel that, that the security of our schools is, is of utmost importance, to lack a better word, or a better statement. And the, the, the use of the cert tax money was specifically language-built to use for this exact purpose. I commend the superintendent for standing by that and making sure that the, that the security department and facilities stuck to exactly what the, the voters approved for, and that we are spending it wisely, that we've gone through the, the correct process with the ICOC to get their way in, to make sure that the acceleration of this project, which I think all five of us, I know all five of us gave that direction, is certainly worth the, the extra scrutiny that we've been going through the last few weeks. Because we want to get it right. We owe it to our students, we owe it to our community. The taxpayers have given us the opportunity to, to secure our schools in a better fashion using a layered approach, and this is certainly part of that. So, thank you to all the departments for collaborating, working through it, and especially in the summer timeframe when we have a ton of other stuff that's going on in facilities and major overhauls and major reconstruction projects also using the, the rest of the cert tax money. So, thank you very much to each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig, Mr. Susan.
So, whereas I agree with Mr. Craig's sentiments across the board, there's one thing that we're not looking at, that I'm, that it's a personal thing that I've been calling for and driving for with security. Between 64 and 70% of active shooters that come into a school are from within. And the fence gates and everything that we put together, that everybody's focused on and are so worried about, it only makes up only a third of the fraction of what's going to happen. For 11 years, there's never been a standard policy throughout our school district to help our teachers and to make sure that they're safe within. And that's an issue that we need to address. 11 years ago, I've been through four black, code blacks, where I've sat down there, and in every one of them was chaos inside the schools. There was no direction, there was no, we did not know as teachers what was going on. There was multiple times, one was three and a half hours with police flying over the top, and it's just situations that were bad. And we need to, as a district, not only evaluate this, but that needs to be the number one directive so that when teachers come to school next year, that we have a plan in place for them to communicate during these situations. Because if you look at the dates, September and April are the largest dates, and those are scary. And that's where I'd, I'd ask you, Mr. Walters, to work with over the next.
Absolutely. No, you break up a valid point. And we talked about the security plan that's been proposed, and we've all expressed that we'd love to take that to higher levels, but it's the lack of funding, for one, and the allocation for the cert tax. We're limited on that, on how we use those dollars. But, you bring up a very good point. We're going to have an opportunity, Dr. Mullins and myself and his staff are working on revising the, the emergency operation plan as it relates to the schools. We're going to have an opportunity to have breakout sessions with all the principals and their designated staff. I believe that's on July 2017, and we'll be here at ESF and have that opportunity. I've provided input so we can condense that because I'm not a complex person. I believe in that. I believe it would be very simple, especially when you're dealing with the crisis, you've got to keep it simple. So, we're eliminating all those codes, so nobody knows what's code black, what's code red, is that a code yellow? Forget about that. We're plain English talk, and there's only going to be three conditions at all the schools. And that would be, you all, as board members, will be briefed on that security plan, will have knowledge of that. But, we're, that's our goal, is to get them in, in place before school starts and have an understanding of what first responders are going to do when they come up on scene, what we expect of them, and how they safeguard those children the best possible.
Can you make sure that's in place before we start the next school year?
Oh, yeah, we, well, it's going to be brought to their attention on the 17th of July, and then they're going to be expected by administration to have their staff brief by that by the time school starts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Susan, Mr. Craig.
I'm sorry. Mr. Theodore, I, I just have one question, is just clarification. It has been, there seems to be some misperception by either reporting or by local knowledge, whatever you want to call it, that, that we are going to be delaying projects that were previously covered under the cert tax and that were, that were scheduled to be done because we're moving this security project forward quicker. I know we've had that discussion, and that is, I think, a misperception. Can you just make sure that we're all on the same page, that that is not happening?
Yes, sir. And I'm glad you asked that question because I'm very happy to say that we are ahead of schedule because of the cash flow that we're receiving in addition to the estimated amount. So, we are doing projects ahead of the original schedule that was published in 2014. What, we are actually, though, lending some money from the facilities receipts to accelerate the security project. It will not affect any projects that Sue has planned for 2018, and we believe that by the time we get to the year of six, so we will go along on those cash flows, accelerated cash flows. When we get to year of six, we will, we, we believe that we will exceed the estimated amount of 198 million and use those additional revenues to make up that loan of $5 million, essentially, that we're loaning to the security to accelerate it and to cover the over. So, there is no delay in facilities projects as a result of this action.
Thank you, Mr. Craig, Ms. Duskevich.
I don't have any more questions, but just my final comments on it. For me, security is a priority. We, as a board, ask for it to be priority. I'm not sure that I recall us asking for it to be quicker, per se, but I, I get how we say we wanted a priority, how things have been pushed forward. But, for me, I don't feel comfortable with this yet. I don't feel like we have the right solution. And I may be the only one up here that feels that way, but that's where I'm at. I appreciate the layered approach. I've talked to Sheriff Ivy also, single point of entry. However, you know, Major Morris and I had lengthy, in-depth conversations before she left, where we're spending the money, we're more worried about everything looking the same at each school, where each school is a different school, than we are about individualized plans for each school. And she's not here to answer that, and I've tried to get a hold of her for the last three days with no luck. So, I couldn't confirm the words that you all said. She supports it now. So, I still have that belief, that we are not doing the most cost-effective for each individual school to keep them the safest, that we're just giving a school a fence that may already be in an enclosed school because the other schools have a fence. And with that, on top of my issues with this contract, to say that there's old language still sitting in the back of it makes me uncomfortable. I mean, this is $5 million of taxpayer money, and to me, it sounds like a sloppy contract. I'm sorry. So, that's where I stand.
Additional board member, additional board member comments or questions? Mr. Craig?
I appreciate all those comments, Ms. Duskevich. The, there was a, the, the board workshop that focused on security, I believe was in March, I believe it was March, it might have been late February. But, anyway, that was where we did give the, this was last year, we gave the direction to, to move quicker. I am also concerned about the contract language. And my question to Ms. Enval is, how do we vote on something that has already been said, "Well, we need to fix that, we need to fix that"? Is, is it legally prudent to, to move forward without having the actual contract language redone, reworded, and you look at it again?
I think that the audit component that's built into the contract is where you may collect any, can you hear me?
You're not, yeah, you're not on.
Is that better? Okay. I think the audit component that's built in the contract is where you're going to catch anything that may not be clear, if that makes sense. The, the language discrepancies that you're referencing, I believe staff and with Wharton Smith, the contractor, have looked at everything, and I think they feel that, at least from what I heard, I think they feel that that's agreeable or doable. As far as moving forward, that's something that you all have to decide as a school board. But, I think the ICOC has looked at everything. Am I correct? Yes? Sorry, I'm going to rely on Sue.
The ICOC is, has looked at the situation. They do not review the contracts, per se.
Okay, okay. Do you want to, from what you've heard today, how, how do you feel about that?
There, there are two pieces. One is the base contract document that was approved by the board in October of 2016. And that has some of the language regarding the salvage value and things like that.
Right.
When we do this particular piece or any construction piece, we do what's called an Exhibit C, which is an amendment to the contract. It defines the pricing for the construction, it defines the substantial completion, final completion dates. And then, if there are any modifications to the contract, for example, we're going to be modifying the contract term regarding the way that the 5% is applied. Our standard language, has been this way for quite some time, is that the 5% fee is lump sum. In this particular case, as part of the Exhibit C amendment, we are going to change that for this contract to say the fee is 5% of the actual cost of work. So, those are the types of things we can change. I'll have to look at the salvage value language and see if that is old or new language. I believe, just off the top of my head, that we changed that after this particular contract. Because of our experience with the HVAC equipment, we felt that that was a prudent change to make to our standard contract that had been in place for a number of years. But, those types of things, we can make those changes as part of the Exhibit C contract amendment that we fully intend to run through Ms. Enval's office.
So, let me clarify, because what I'm looking at on this agenda item is Exhibit C. You're asking us to approve what's in front of us on this agenda as Exhibit C, but then you're planning on bringing forward a different Exhibit C with the company that would not be approved by the board?
The, the terms of the recommendation will be incorporated into the Exhibit C, and we would modify the standard terms that we use to reflect what the board has approved. So, for example, the incorporation of the front entry lockdown, if the board approves that part of the recommendation, we would add that to the guaranteed maximum price. We would incorporate that into the Exhibit C and make sure that we have the final document based on the board's direction. So, in this case, we were not sure what the board's direction might be, and so, we would modify that document based on the board's direction today and make sure that Ms. Enval is satisfied with it.
I'm really confused.
It's all mine. So, what you are looking for from us is the changes that we would like to see in Exhibit C, that you will then bring back to us later for approval after you make those changes and Ms. Enval approves it?
Yes, ma'am. If you approve the recommendation, we will make what, what I would consider minor changes to the Exhibit C to incorporate all of those terms that are in the recommendation.
I'm sorry, Ms. Duskovich. I was trying to read the details of the recommendation. So yes, please feel free to ask while I'm reading.
Uh, you, so the recommend, when you say recommendation, you mean your recommendation on?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm, let me make sure I'm clear. I'm perfectly comfortable with Exhibit C the way it is. And we would incorporate the $474,000 for the lock, front entry lockdown by change order. Perfectly comfortable with that. Based on some of the conversations that we've had over the past few days and the desire to amend how we typically do our fee calculation, your comment about the salvage value, we can incorporate those terms in, either into this Exhibit C or can do a subsequent contract amendment that stands all on its own for Ms. Enval's review. Either, either way works for us.
So when you say recommendations, you're talking about our recommendations?
I'm talking about the recommendations that are in the board memo. Those are our recommendations to the board.
On the screen.
Yes, ma'am.
So, board members, just to clarify, the, the recommendation on today's action agenda is not to approve the contract or the Exhibit C. The recommendation is to approve the total project construction budget, the GMP, the inclusion of the lockdown. So I believe that we could motion to approve the recommendation, but require that the contract come back to the board at a later date.
That's what I'm hearing.
I, I would agree, because if we approve the contract, then
Can't change it.
Then the only way we can change it is if we have mutual agreement with the vendor, and they don't have to agree. So that can put us in a, in a compromising position. So I like the suggestion.
Additionally, Ms. Duskovich, I know, not that, that my word carries the same weight as Major Moros, because she certainly is the expert in this area. But I will tell you that I had a very lengthy conversation with Major Walters. She's not Major Moros anymore. She's now Commander Moros. Our facility staff, Dr. Mullins, I, I was here for about a little, almost an hour and a half, having conversation, and the bulk of that conversation was with Major Moros, because one of my, Commander Moros, because one of my significant concerns was that we not revisit this conversation a year down the road and determine that the game plan that we had for establishing a secure school didn't meet the needs to actually establish a secure school. And we talked a little bit about that idea, that there are some places where they're fencing, but we're planning on putting up additional fences where we might already be showing fencing on a plan. And in those instances, actually, what has happened is that those fences are no longer there. So when they went out there, Major Moros went out and viewed all of these projects, looked at the drawings. When they went out initially, there was no plan to put fencing up because the, the documents that we had showed that there was a fence in place. But on actual physical inspection of the facility, that fence was no longer there. So they're now putting fencing in. So she was very, and, and I, I hammered her pretty good on really needing to know that it was her opinion, because she's been here for the longest. Not that I don't trust Major Walters and, and his input, but she was the one that had eyes on and actually walked the campuses and saw all that. And she gave me her commitment that she felt like the plan that's coming forward is exactly what we need to do to create that single point of entry for the schools. So I, like I said, not that, not that I'm trying to bully you into making a decision or, because I understand if you need to speak with her, but I just wanted to share that insight with you because that was a major concern of mine when we talked. Any additional board comments? Mr. Susan.
Just a quick question. As far as dealing with the audit, Ingram, what happens if you find some kind, what happens if, what happens if you find something that was wrong with the audit? Is there a reach back into the contractor? Is there charge backs? What is that processed by what happens? So say he puts up the wrong chain link fence or something like that, right? We go back. What is there? What, what happens? Or we're overcharged? Whatever that is.
So a couple of different parts of that question. If he puts up the wrong chain link fence, that's on us, the facilities, to find that and get it corrected.
Okay.
So that's before we do the closeout. When we do the contract closeout, we are at a point where we have accepted the project.
Gotcha.
Right? So it's been inspected and all of that. We send all of the contract documents, the final pay requests, and all of the pieces and parts that go with all of that to Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. They review it based on the contract terms. They go visit the contractor, often for days, in this case, it probably will be for days, and look at their payroll records, their insurance bills, their bonding costs, their subcontractor costs. They validate that what they've charged us is correct and in accordance with the contract.
And there's a cost in there for industry standard for cost of fence and all that other stuff, correct?
No, there is actual cost.
Yes.
They, they don't validate that the cost, the linear foot cost is, you know, within an average standard. They validate that they were charged X and we paid X.
Okay.
Any additional board discussion? So the original motion that was put forward was to approve this item, item G31, District School Security Design Build Services. We either need to vote on the approval of that item or offer an amended motion to consider a later contract approval. Ms. Askewar?
Since there was a, it's not coming on. Since there was already a, a motion and a second, don't you have to vote on this one? And then you would bring forth, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We can amend it, though.
Yes, we, we can amend this, the standing motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Correct, Ms. Enval?
Yes.
Yeah. So what are the wishes of the board at this point? Would you like me to call the question on the standing motion?
No.
Mr. Craig says no.
I can't break my tea sheet out.
I guess I'm, I, I'm confused. I, I think, and I guess I looked at legal to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Is what the chair stated, that, that what we're voting on is the recommendation and not the actual contract, in fact, true? Or do we need to, because I do not want to vote on a contract right now that is not the language that the contract is going to be. I don't want to amend a contract after we've already approved a contract. So I'm not quite sure where we stand on that.
Ms. Enval is eager to weigh in?
And I think Dane's ready as well. If you look at the recommendation under the item itself, you're approving the total project construction budget for district school security. You're approving the guaranteed maximum price number two submitted by Wharton Smith. You're preferring the additive alternate number one for front entry lockdown, the sales SRTAX. It does not say you're approving Exhibit C there. So you're just approving the funding and then moving over. Is that correct?
Dr. Blackburn?
And if I could reiterate something salient, you've said a lot of important things, Ms. Han, but something salient that Ms. Han said was that the item, we stand behind the item as is, and we believe it will accomplish everything that we needed to accomplish. If the board would like to direct additionally, then that's fine, but we believe this item accomplishes everything. If that helps your conversation.
It, it does. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't actually approving Exhibit C without the changes that have been agreed to and that have been agreed to by the, by the vendor and across the board. Because that, I think, would not be prudent for the board to approve an exhibit and then go back and try and re, reword it based on what they thought they heard. I think we need to see that exhibit in its entirety and vote on it that way as a, as the contract. I think the motion, or I mean, the, the item does not ask us to approve Exhibit C. It put Exhibit C as a, as an exhibit, because it's not the actual contract, is the way I'm reading it. So I don't know, but.
Let me just clarify, there, there is a contract that was executed in October of 26. So there's the base contract.
Understood that, right.
Because Exhibit C simply amends the contract to incorporate the new work. And we can do more than one of those. As I stated earlier, what is there is fine. Or we can amend the Exhibit C to reflect the terms that we've talked here today and agreed to with Wharton Smith, based on the conversations we've had in the last couple of days.
As, as I see it, if I may, we are, the second item approved guaranteed maximum price number two submitted would be Exhibit C. That's what it says at the header of Exhibit C. And in, you read Exhibit C, it incorporates by reference the proposal that is below that. So I guess my question would be, since we approved the contract in October, does not approving this at this moment, until we get the changes for C, does not approving this at that moment hold up work that has been approved by the previous award?
No, it does not.
Does not hold up work? So then
This work.
It, it holds up the additional schools?
It holds up the additional schools.
Which commencement date is?
Tomorrow.
And completion date projected as?
The conclusion of spring break 2018.
Okay. So it runs in, so it's not like we're, we're, we've got to get this done before school starts.
To some extent, though, we, we are about to miss the summer window. That is, that is the importance of today.
So I guess the question to Ms. Enval will be is how do we move forward on this, not hold up the project, but contractually be able to make, you know, be able to make changes? That's, I think that's our biggest concern, is that we know there's some, some modifications to be made. How do we proceed and keep that open for modifications?
You can amend a contract at any time. So you could approve it as is, under the express condition that we're going to be moving it, amending it later. The only risk that you have in that is that we, the contractor is kind of doing like a head nod and a, and a yes, we'll amend it. Do I think that would fail to amend, you know, if we could amend and add that language? I think, I think it would be okay. But you would just then have to amend Exhibit C one more time. But if you approve it today, then it could move forward as is with that amendment coming up afterwards. Is that?
The, I guess the
Is that the answer, a question?
Yeah. So I guess the question, though, is do we, do we want right now to whittle down to what those changes are and define them so we know what we're expecting going forward?
And include that in a amendment to the motion.
Right.
Which I think is the prudent thing to do.
I'm, I'm hearing from my fellow board members, and correct me if I'm misinterpreting what you're saying, but I'm getting the sense that we do not feel comfortable approving the agenda item as, the, the recommendations as stated in the agenda item. At the same time, I want to be, I want to be cognizant of, of the pressure that delaying again would put on the projects and our ability to get them done during the summer months when we don't have children running around the schools. So it sounds to me like what we need to do is have some discussion on the amendments that we would like to see on Exhibit C, and then propose a motion to approve the item with the stated amendments included in the contract. I, I think that that would meet the needs, if I'm hearing my peers appropriately. Mr. Susan?
And there's another thing called legislative intent, which means that, and all law firms do this, that if there's any question as to what went on, they go back to the tapes. And what is stated at the podium is legislatively intent, more so than what actually is written. And that is a, that is a, we used to win cases up in Tallahassee over that.
While I respect that, given our past, I think I would feel much more comfortable that we put forward our stated amendments to the Exhibit C on which we can approve. Thank you for that insight, though, Mr. Susan.
A wild thought, if this is legal to do, to not spend eons in the weeds right now. Ms. Han and Mr. Theodore, is there a meeting of the minds between staff and our vendor on these changes to C? Has that already been discussed?
Yes.
And we know that those changes are going to come forward and approved?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible, yes? Is it possible, then, we can approve this item contingent upon an urgent document, binding document from the vendor agreeing to these changes, to then be incorporated in to an amendment? But therefore, we're saying, okay, as long as there's a binding document of intent, and I, that's why I asked if there's a meeting of the minds, because if there is, then this is just a formality. But I think the board would like documented, something documented, so we're confident that there's a meeting of the minds and this has been agreed to.
I would, I would defer to Dane or Mr. Theodore on the, the discussions you've had with the vendor. And we do have a representative of the vendor with us right now as well.
Yes, ma'am. If I can make a recommendation, this, these are very small changes to a very large contract. They're, they're insignificant, immaterial, essentially. I would recommend to move forward that the board approve, amend their motion to approve the item with stipulated changes to Amendment C, those being that the fee would convert from a lump sum to an actual percentage of the actual costs, that the salvage rights belong to the owner, and that you would incorporate the lockdown provision. Those are the three items that would amend the Exhibit C before you. A lockdown was going to come back as a change order because we didn't know how you were going to proceed. But if you're moving forward with the motion, I would recommend that you incorporate that as one of the stipulated changes to C. We can bring back an amended C by the end of the day for signature.
Thoughts from board members on
That work?
That recommendation? I think that was along the lines of where we were, but Ms. Duskovich?
It sounds like that's where most of you are. I, I'm getting more uncomfortable by the minute. I just want it on the record that when there's confusion to me and pressure to make a decision quickly for, out of fear, I, I just can't support that.
I guess I, I, I'm confused on the fear part. I just, I mean, we've been discussing this for, I mean, this contract has been signed for, since October and was open for review.
The, I guess, the fear part isn't, I'm afraid of you punching me in the face.
No, 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 no. I just want to make sure that I don't, because you have, you have valid concerns, and I don't know what the, the fear part is, because, you know, if it's moving forward quickly, again, put that on, put, you were not part of that original discussion. The two board, the new board members were not, but that was on us. We, we, no one in that department, no one in, well, it was security and us and the board together, through several different executive sessions and other meetings, decided that it was prudent for us to move forward as quickly as possible and get, and not prioritize one school over another over a six-year period. Is one child's safety more important than another? And, and that was the question, that, that, to me, was the philosophical question that I had to answer in my mind, and, and I can't. I can't, I cannot prioritize one student at one school over another and provide a single point entry three years prior to another student. And so to me, presented with a lot of other compounding factors, we needed to move forward and get this done at one time, so that we have a cohesive and district-wide, basic-level security plan for our schools that was rooted in a, in a vetted capability or vetted necessity and requirement. So, but if, if there is a fear that we're moving too fast outside of that, or if that is, I, I just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because I don't, we don't want to force anybody. And if it feels to you that you're being forced to make that decision quick, then, then that is then that is, that's something we need to discuss, because that should not be the intent of this board. This was a proactive, proactive move by the board, and it is not, the crunch timeline is not reactive. It is based on the direction that this board gave over a series of meetings and workshops. And all the pieces have been put in place to move forward. And therefore, you know, that's why, yeah, they're going to start tomorrow? Exactly. Because, I mean, the minute that you, the minute that we say it's okay, I would hope they would start like an hour later. I don't want to wait. And we've had that discussion, so, but if there is other things that you're concerned with, I, we need to have that discussion. And it's nothing on you. I mean, it's, it's more on us as the board that, that pushed this early on to answer those questions and, and those concerns.
Ms. Duskevich, did you want to respond to Mr. Craig's request for clarification on your concerns?
Maybe fear was the wrong, the wrong word. Wasn't necessarily fear. It is an uncomfortableness. It is a priority, but again, there's just, there's many layers. Kind of borrowing money from the future to be able to accomplish it, so it can all be accomplished at once. I guess I'm more a methodical, slow-paced person, and just the way I do things, and the way I think, and the way I make decisions. And so this whole plan makes me uncomfortable. And that doesn't mean the board has to agree with me. I mean, we're five individual people. And for me, it would be better that we spend as we go, if that means having to prioritize schools where we have little ones running more than we don't, or something of that nature. If that means one school gets something different because their school needs are different, there's, there's many levels. And then there's the contract, which I'm glad we're addressing, and we all have concerns about. And so if we have concerns about a contract, the fear for me is you have to do it now, or then we can't get it done in the summer. That was where the word fear came from. It wasn't really a fear. I guess it's not a fear, but it's a urgency, urgency, do it now, do it now. I'm more like, okay, let me go think about that a little bit. Let's get the paperwork right, then let's sign the contract. I just, it's too fast for me. Again, if four of you don't agree, then that's okay. I don't think there's, you know, a problem. We all don't have to agree on every last thing.
Additional board comment? Mr. Susan?
I'll be okay.
Okay. Mr. Ziegler?
I appreciate your having concerns about speed, and you should be comfortable before you vote, no doubt. I think it was very prudent of the superintendent to pull this item at our last meeting because of that exact reason. There was some hesitation, concerns, speed, all of that, and we all needed clarification. I'd like to thank the superintendent, and staff, and security, and everybody for taking the time to sit down with us and go over in depth the concerns that we had, and which did include concerns from the community. And I am comfortable that everything was done, double-checked, approved, level of expertise, et cetera, et cetera. One of my biggest fears, if we want to talk about fear, one of my biggest fears is us failing to take proactive action to protect our babies. And something happens in the interim, because we have some doubt about some contract language. And I do agree with the concerns about contract language, and I, I think that the simple solution is, and I, I think we agree, we'll find out soon enough, is to have an amendment to the motion, which I'll make an amendment, that we have a contingency on Exhibit C. Before we move forward, that there be an agreement in writing, which you said we can get in short order since there's a meeting of the minds, that would include that the contingency fund was based on actual cost, that the salvage rights are included, and on the lockdown provision, leaving verbiage to staff to draft and get approved by legal counsel. And that would be my motion, is that we approve contingent upon those changes being documented.
Second for discussion.
Thank you.
Pam, did you get that? I'll, I'll go to him momentarily. Pam, did you get the verbiage on the amended motion?
I don't have about the lockdown, the lockdown. Incorporating the lock, what is?
Incorporating the front-entry lockdown proposal.
And Mr. Theodore, I think, had a comment about something I, verbiage?
The contingency is always based on actual cost. I believe what you meant was that the fee would be based on, on the percentage of the actual cost.
The fee conversion.
The fee conversion. Okay. Then, then, then please modify the motion accordingly. And if John's okay with that, if his second stands?
It stands.
So motion by Mr. Ziegler to amend, to include contingency cost adjustment, salvage rights, and front-entry lockdown. And that is open for word discussion. Any discussion on the amended motion? Mr. Craig?
I just go back to the original motion. Nowhere does it ever say that we are actually approving Exhibit C. There is reference to items inside of Exhibit C, like the GMP, but Exhibit C is not what we're actually voting on, is the way I, I mean, it's not listed anywhere in the, either the actual discussion or the recommendations. Am I correct in that, Ms. Han?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I am good with that, then?
All right. Any, any additional discussion on the amended motion being offered? Okay, then we will...
Hang on.
Mr. Ziegler has discussion.
Mr. Craig is right, there's no specific reference to Exhibit C. I was looking at the verbiage aligning with Exhibit C.
I think it's right on.
Guaranteed maximum price.
I think what you said was right on. I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record that we are not actually approving Exhibit C, we're giving direction to modify the language in, as a part of our recommendation.
Right. And this is all, and it's contingent upon that binding document that this can then proceed. It's like giving preapproval.
Correct.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? All right, then we will call for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye, nay?
The motion passes four to one.
Now the primary motion with the amendment.
Now we need, oh, okay, so that was a motion to approve the amended motion. So now we have to vote on the primary motion, so that you do not need a voice vote on, correct, Pam? All right.
Make sure everybody knows what, how they're supposed to...
So we are, the original motion that was put forth was the recommendation without the amendment, so the original motion would then not be supported because we approved the amended motion. Correct?
No, the, the amendment changes the initial motion.
Okay.
So now the motion we're voting on includes that amendment for the contingency, for the modifications to C.
Okay. We good there, Ms. Duskevich? Okay. So we are voting on the amended motion.
Motion.
For your response. And it passes four to one. You good?
Excellent parliamentary procedure.
We are now moving on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn?
There are 25, I'm just kidding. There are two items under the information category. A little levity there.
Does any member wish to discuss any item? Excellent. Yes? Mr. Ziegler?
I said no.
Oh, okay, I thought you said yes. Okay. Then we are now at the board member reports and discussion point section. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. Any board members have discussion points they would like to bring forward?
These are super quick. One, on their number 35, names and policies. We had a policy, I think we approved earlier, that named specific names in a policy. I feel like somewhere along my life, I've heard that that's not a good idea. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone kind of, where everyone stood on that, and we give maybe Amy direction on future policies, if we're going to name people if that's necessary. And then I have one more thing, two after that.
And, and on that issue, Ms. Enval, I'll give you the opportunity to respond, but I saw the head nod that you agree that that probably is a waste of, of time to continually have to...
It is. It's been, it's consistently been my recommendation to include superintendent or designee, if you're doing something. In this particular one that has the names on it, it was the Title IX and the EEOC and those kind of things. I typically don't remember you put a name in policy. You could certainly put a position, or you could designate to the superintendent to then designate someone who will handle those EEOC and Title IX complaints. But usually putting names in policies is not something I recommend, because then you have to go through a whole policy revision process to change that name.
Which is what, which is what we had on the agenda somewhere tonight, I mean, today.
We, we did approve that policy, I think, going forward. My discussions with Ms. Enval is, is kind of looking at our overall policy process, and as we discussed in our board retreats, developing a process for the board to be more involved in that policy revision process in general. So I think moving forward, that's one of the things that we need to do. This was a technical change on the one that we approved today. Unfortunately, if we were going to go in and remove those names completely, then it gets a little more involved, and so, but I do think we'll change process going forward based on what I'm, I'm hearing.
And it was okay. Under, under the technical change policy, I think it's 031, it is okay. It specifically mentions that that would be all right, but we can certainly move that moving forward as we get more involved in the policy revision process. I would definitely not recommend having names in policies.
Okay. Then my second issue actually just came about today when Mr. Napier recommended a, he set up policy to set our contracts kind of in a standard way. I don't, I don't know if that's a policy that needs to be changed, or if it's a procedure thing, or we need to give somebody direction. I knew Ms. Han said they were working on that, but for me, with this huge contract, I opened up a lot of our old contracts and tried to compare, and what was different, what was out of place? And they're all different, and so there was no reference point. Something I'd like to see done. Anybody else?
I agree.
Yeah, I, I think based on, on board discussion previously, as well as discussion that we have had, and discussion I've had with Ms. Enval, I think that is certainly something that is on the radar for moving forward, is making sure that we have some standardized contract elements. And then, of course, review, but it's, it's...
It's a policy, then? It's more of a procedural thing, or how does that?
Ms. Enval, would you like to address your recommendation on policy versus administrative procedure on contract?
It is. So, so usually policies are your umbrellas, and they authorize the procedures. And I think internally, your, your administrative procedures are going to have, we shall use standardized templates language, so that everything is consistent. And that's definitely something that I actually enjoy doing and look forward to working with staff on working on.
Okay. That's all I got.
All right. Additional, additional board member reports or discussion points?
So the first thing that I wanted to say is, is that I'd like staff to look towards, and we've talked about it a little bit before, about moving towards professional development online, whereas the cost of having windshield time and whole group discussion not only is ineffective, but it also costs our district a whole lot, as you can see through all the supplements that were, were done today, where we're bringing in a person to lecture to an entire group of teachers, where half of them aren't even paying attention. So I would like to send direct staff to do that. The other thing is, is that I think our equity division is not doing a very good job. And the reason is, is because Andy's sign is half as big as the rest of ours in front of our school board thing right here. And his name needs to be expanded so that our senior former chair does not feel any less of a school board member than we actually are.
I haven't noticed, and I'm not willing to spend the money on...
All right. That's, that's you. All right. And that's all.
Thank you for your concern. I, I appreciate that.
Always enlightening, Mr. Susan. Mr. Ziegler?
And as far as, I'm just going to comment on the online professional development. I, I'm hoping you're not saying that's the primary or only way to do it, because personally, I'm not a very good online learner. And I, I think a nice option, though, somehow, but anyways. I would like to report and let everybody know, of course, the board knows, we have Florida School Board Association Conference coming up in Tampa, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and the Coalition, the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition Breakfast on Thursday morning. I'm happy to report, as I think the board is aware, that the Coalition has supported the superintendent's efforts on lobbying the governor for vetoing House Bill 7069. And that letter got a lot of recognition from thirteen counties, so that, that carries a lot of weight. We'll see what happens on Thursday with that. And one of my, as a chair of the Coalition, I've always felt that the Coalition was not quite as effective as it should be as a voice for 13 school districts. And so my, my, my goal and my mission, just for my year, has been that it would be a voice for education in Central Florida, and I think we're accomplishing that. And we'll be, we'll be branding ourselves and making ourselves known before the end of my term. So all's going well there. Look forward to learning things in Tampa, I believe. Superintendent, Dr. Blackburn, you'll be there? Excellent. And I think we have some staff that's going to be there also. Always a great opportunity to mingle with our peers and learn. And it's also a good time for us, when we have questions about things we're doing in our district, to talk about it to other districts about them and get some input. That's all I have to report right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Mr. Craig? Did you have a comment?
Just one. Mr. Bennett brought up an issue during public comment that asked the superintendent to do a little bit more research on, or at least give the board a better idea. The, the use or the, the policy for any employee, whether it's a teacher, or a cafeteria worker, or a custodial engineer, if they are required to interview or, or present themselves somewhere else in, in preparation for either trying to upgrade, or, or advance, or transfer, I'd like to know where we sit with, across the district, on, on how that is, is handled, how that time allocation is handled? Because I want to make sure we're consistent across all groups. It shouldn't be just a teacher issue. It's, you know, we have 9,000 employees, and hopefully every one of them is, is, is always looking to try and either upgrade, or, or improve, or, or advance themselves. Or perhaps there's just reason for them to transfer, whether it's family obligations or whatever. So I want to make sure we understand. I, I don't know what it is, so I just asked if you could kind of give us some background on that going forward, obviously not now.
I can do it briefly now. We are extremely, as you can tell by the, by the applicants that are brought before you for approval, I mean, up and down the board, we are extremely supportive of employees seeking to better themselves. If Mr. Bennett has a, first time that's ever been brought to my attention at all, so if he has a particular situation where he feels an employee somewhere was not given adequate opportunity to vie for another position, I would call on Mr. Bennett to inform me of what that situation was, and I can determine whether or not we have an anomaly or a systemic issue.
Okay. But to your knowledge, we, we don't force people to take personal time to...
To my knowledge, first time I've heard of that, and I see Dr. Kent's head shaking no in the back there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Additional board discussion items? Okay, I have two quick things I'm going to throw in there before I turn it over to Dr. Blackburn. One, additional follow-up to Mr. Bennett's comment that he made during public discussion, and this was referenced at the last board meeting as well, and perhaps Ms. Enval can take a look into this and get back to us. And that is the concept that if annual contract reappointment were a part of policy, then it would not be subject to the constraints of 7069, requiring that we do not reappoint annual contract teachers until a later date? So if you, not now, but when you get a chance to look into it and kind of bring the board up to speed on that, I think the, at least the, the three of us who have been here for some time... I think the, at least the, the three of us who have been here for some time certainly have expressed a strong desire to do all that we can to support our teachers and letting them know that they will be reappointed as early as possible. So if you have creative ways that we can ensure that that happens going forward, we would certainly appreciate your recommendations on it. And then a quick thing that I wanted to share with you all, back when we were looking at opening the health clinics for the employees, there was a lot of discussion about who our vendor was going to be to provide those services. And had just, you know, sometimes you happen across these opportunities. One of my swim moms was recently hired by Marathon to work in one of our clinics. And so I was just talking to her about, you know, what is the organization like to work for and, you know, what are your, what's your feeling about how everything goes? She could not sing the praises of that company enough about the strength of culture, about the high expectations, about their completely different approach to healthcare from any place that she has ever worked previously. And I just think that that speaks volumes at, at the level of care that we're bringing to our employees in these clinics. So I just wanted to share that with you all and, and congratulate you all on a, a great choice to provide care for our employees. Dr. Blackburn, do you have any updates you'd like to share?
I don't. Thank you, Mrs. Belfour.
All right. There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.